Right, we're recording.
Got it, great. Um, hi, everybody. Welcome to City of Tombwater's Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, March 26, 2024 at 7:00 PM and our meeting is called to order. I'll start with roll call. Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Commissioner Staff.
Here.
Commissioner Tobias, Vice Chair Tobias.
Here.
Commissioner Varela.
Here.
And me, Commissioner Robbins. Um, all right, we're all here. Um, any changes to our agenda tonight?
Uh, staff doesn't have any change.
All right. Let's go to approval of minutes and as somebody was pointing out, we got a big tranche of them and I just want to kind of say again how grateful I am to the recording, the preparer. And she does a really great job, so. In any case, uh, I guess we could do this a number of ways. We can go through them one by one. Um, or if there's any revisions or suggestions or, um, you know, polishing that needs to go on, uh, we can discuss that. Um, or there can be a kind of a bulk, um, motion. Looks like Commissioner Varela.
Yes, I moved that we approved the minutes from November, uh, 28th, 2023, December 12th, 2023, January 9th, and 23rd, 2024, and February 13th and 27th, 2024, as noted in the packet.
Vice Chair Tobias, I'll second that motion.
Excellent. Um, thank you that's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve all the sets of minutes, um, as enumerated, uh, in the motion. Um, any last discussion of those, any one of those, uh, or anything like that? Seeing none, uh, all in favor of approving, um, the full set of six minutes? Um, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Uh, any opposed? All right, they're all approved, way to go. Um, are there any, moving right along, are there any commissioners' reports, things you've been doing, seeing around town or anywhere? All right. Brad, how about manager's report?
We're just having a wild time here. Okay. Uh, I apologize, we, uh, our, uh, Economic Development Manager left us last week to go back to California, uh,
Oh gee.
Being near, being near to family and everything, so we didn't fight with him too much. Uh, but that's a big, big loss for us because, uh, Austin did a great job with us. Um, and so we are kind of scrambling to try to cover what his workload was and do a few other things. Um, we are also in the middle of preparing for your joint work session with the city council. Uh, that's April 9th, uh, at 6:00 PM. Uh, we'll be doing a tour of housing and talking about various things. Uh, the tour will be focused primarily in Olympia and Tombwater. So we're, we're hoping for good weather. We know we're going to have sunlight or, excuse me, daylight for most of the, most of the time we're out, so we're quite excited about that. I think that covers it. Erica, did you have anything?
No, uh, council approved, um, our resolution for the hazard mitigation plan. That passed and then they also adopted the floodplain overlay amendments. Um, so that's, that's awesome for me. Uh, we got those kind, yeah, we got those completed and, uh, adopted and signed, so, um, yeah, we're really going to start focusing on the comprehensive plan and then maybe, uh, talk about how we're going to maybe revisit the vegetation, tree and vegetation.
Yeah, so a couple of other things. Um, again, thanks to Erica for getting the hazard mitigation plan and the floodplain ordinance through. But we got the official confirmation from the state this morning that everything is in order for the floodplain ordinance and that was also sent to FEMA at the same time, so we were truly done with that. Um, so that's, that's good news. Uh, in terms of the restart for the urban forestry items, now that the state legislation has passed, uh, basically, uh, taking the woody changes off the table for the next two to three years while they sort out some mapping. Uh, we can now proceed with all the things we said we wanted to do a year ago. Um, so what we have right now is scheduled a joint work session with the Tree Board for June, uh, to basically restart that process.
Great. Okay. Any remarks from anybody on, on those items from Brad and Erica? All right. Looking forward to those joint sessions, that'll be a lot of fun. Just a quick question, Brad, the one with the, with the council where we'll be visiting some sites in Olympia, will, will any officials from Olympia be with us?
Uh, we have not invited any yet, uh, so we're going to be sneaking across the border and then back. Because, you know, we've got our council with us and we don't want to create any issues, so we might have to ask you to wear this hat.
All right, well. A ski mask.
We're, we're focused mostly on what you can see rather than say that their policies and what they're doing.
Okay, great. Okay, um, let's move on to, um, uh, public comment. Do we have anybody here or have you heard from anybody in, since our last meeting about anything?
No, there, there is no one online and we haven't had anybody contact us with comments or come in with, with comments.
Okey doke. Um, then let's move on to, um, our main item tonight, our, uh, the eighth item of business, the, um, uh, community survey results. It's, um, pretty in-depth, I really, I really appreciate how in-depth, uh, those all are. I guess, Erica, are you leading this one?
Uh, I'll be taking the lead, but Eric will be providing a lot of, uh, input.
Very good, go ahead.
Yeah, we'll see.
And she'll also be focusing on the positive and I'll be dwelling on the negative. You may want to listen to her more. Um, and I also, again, I'm really excited to note that every picture in here is actually a picture from Tombwater. Uh, since we were quite excited to find that we have a, a very nice photo library. Um, the intent of tonight's presentation is to present the results of our non-scientific community survey. And I'm going to be emphasizing the non-scientific quality of that, uh, repeatedly tonight because it isn't a scientific surge, uh, survey. Meaning that we didn't go out and identify particular, uh, groups or people that we thought we need to do that, but it's not balanced across all the income groups and everything else. What it is, is a self responding survey that was posted on the website. Um, that actually, uh, we're quite excited about, had a really good turn, turnout. Uh, but we need to take what, you know, sort of the percentage is and things like that over the grain of salt. So, we'll also touch briefly on some of the upcoming activities after, after we finish this. Um, just to remind everybody, our community engagement process, again, uh, we are looking for meaningful opportunities, uh, throughout the process for the community and stakeholders to participate in the update. Um, so this was probably the first community line outreach that we did as part of this process. Uh, going forward, we're going to be focusing more on individual, uh, topics and, and elements. So housing obviously will be a very big topic, climate, transportation and so forth. Um, we will base a lot of the, uh, future work that we're doing on some of the issues that were raised as part of this. Um, so we will be using what we've learned from the survey to sort of help guide the discussion and also guide the discussion of where we weren't able to reach everybody that we thought would be able to reach. Pardon me. So again, the, uh, the picture here is actually the postcard that was mailed out to all 22,000 households in the city. Uh, that was done in November. Uh, the objective of the survey again was, number one, inform the community about the update that was in progress. Uh, we wanted to get a general idea of the specific issues and elements that were of interest to people. Uh, we also really wanted to get an idea of preferences for notification and events. Uh, obviously, things change very quickly in terms of where people get information. Uh, and we wanted to make sure that we had a fairly decent idea of, of where we could focus our efforts. And also, we wanted to use this as sort of a litmus test to see who we heard from and who we didn't. Uh, because we do have the results, obviously, from our community survey work, uh, that was done as a recent census. So we do know the makeup of the city, percentage of renters, the percentage of, of men and women and all that. And we wanted to see how that matched up with the survey itself. As I mentioned, the survey started in November. Uh, we did mail out all those postcards and we also posted notices on our webpage and our social media platforms. Uh, we closed the survey on Valentine's Day. Uh, we had 975 total responses, uh, which we were quite excited about. Uh, when we had done a similar survey as part of the 2016 update, we only had 120 responses. Uh, so this was, you know, a huge, huge improvement. Now, we think the responses were driven by a number of different things. We, we did ask our council to pick some really exciting things to stir up the community. And that, of course, helped us, uh, in terms of, uh, people responding. So you'll notice some of the comments are really focused on, say, homelessness and parks and so forth. Um, that's, again, I mean, if you're going to get interested, that there are certain avenues you get interested in. But again, I'm just, you know, happy that people did to take the time to actually complete the survey and provide comment. Um, again, just as a reminder, this is a, as a non-scientific survey, it disrespects the opinions of those who chose to respond to the survey. And we need, as when we're drawing conclusions from what we're talking about, that, that should be taken into account. First, I just want to start with some demographic questions. Um, the, what I provided in the staff report is some data, uh, from the, uh, the survey, that, excuse me, the, the census that the, uh, First and Regional Planning Council puts together on an annual basis. Uh, they draw together like the 2020 survey results plus the American Community Survey, which is done on a more frequent basis, plus their own calculations to, uh, give us an idea of the makeup of the community. Uh, they focus on employment, they focus on population characteristics and so forth. So I encourage you, if you haven't done so already, to look at the staff report as well. Uh, so you can get an idea of, of how this, how the survey that we did matches up with what the community looks like according to the TRPC data. Uh, the survey respondents, uh, for the most part, 80% responded saying they lived in the city and that, excuse me, as I move this because I'm trying to find the best location for this one. Um, also went back. And for the most part, it was interesting on terms of the, how long people have lived here. Again, 25% were five years and less and then we started to, it surprised me, we had more potentially over 11 years. So obviously, the, the people who responded to the survey were, were most part long-term residents. Uh, it's also reflected in the type of housing they have. But, let me see. For the most part, the survey respondents said they lived in a single-family house. Uh, there was, uh, limited other types of housing that was indicated. Uh, most were homeowners, 68% indicated that they were homeowners, only 10% said they rented. 20% didn't ask the que, answer the question or, uh, they didn't live in the city to begin with. So what these numbers, how they match up with what we have from the TRPC data is we have about 58 to 42% uh, owners versus renters in the city. Uh, so what this, number one, this tells us is, obviously, the survey is, is geared mostly to the people who own their house right now. That also tells us that when we have outreach and especially when we're doing our outreach for the housing element, we have to do a better job of getting to the rental uh, market. So we have some strategies that we're working on to do that. Uh, we'll talk a little bit more about that at our next meeting when we talk about the housing side. Thanks. In terms of work in the city, um, about 40%, a little bit over 40% said they worked in the city. Uh, about 10% said they owned a business in the city. And then in terms of annual household income, uh, over almost 37% said they had over 125% of $125,000 uh, annual income. Now, our area median income for the city is about 102,000. So what that means is a half of the population is under that, the other half is above that in terms of households. Um, so that also obviously tells us that we have more work to do to, uh, make sure that we're getting, uh, input from those who are under that 50%, I love your 170 and why and everything. So, just understand that this is the, where the survey people were coming from.
Do you have a question?
Oh, sure.
Just a question out of curiosity, for those that work in Tombwater, is that specifically for those that physically have a job located here? Uh, or does that also incorporate those that maybe work here remotely for other country or other companies potentially, uh, within the state or other state?
And that's a good question because we didn't ask specifically, do you, you know, leave the house to work here or do you work from home? Or, you know, is your job entail a combination of both of those things? So I, the data doesn't tell us that.
And my real, real question for asking that, or reason for asking that is for, with the increase in remote and telework on the infrastructure, uh, may be something to look at as well as far as, you know, getting fiber optic or something that would allow more capability, especially as you get further away, uh, to enhance that. Okay, I was just, I was just wondering.
That was a good question.
I believe Commissioner Tobias had it.
I did, but it's, it's kind of jumping the gun because the, the next slide goes over household size, but as far as, um, uh, annual income, uh, source, I wonder, do you control for household size based on, so the average household has, yeah, you know, you mentioned 37% have 124,000 or, or more. Um, you know, is that control for, uh, it's a single-person household versus if it's a, like a couple or a multifamily household that, uh, you know, you're accounting for like all of their incomes together?
Yeah, this would be household income for all, but it doesn't necessarily call out for one person, two person, or four person, et cetera, size household or multiple income.
Okay.
There is a question later on in the survey that asks what the household kind of makeup is, but people did have the option to skip certain questions. So it, again, it's not scientific data, but it does give us an idea. Um, it does go over like household size.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's just, it's hard to gauge scientific data from that.
And we're, based on the results that we had in the form that the results came in, we weren't able to say match up. So if you, if somebody answered 125, this is their size of the household. So we didn't have that ability with the survey that we used to do that kind of.
I was just wondering because, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a very different picture if you have, uh, you know, one-person household making 100,000 a year versus two people making 50,000 each, you know?
Right.
But I understand where you're coming from on that.
Uh, in terms of gender, uh, it was more female than male. Um, this was also a little bit higher percentage of female than, uh, what the TRPC data showed. Um, in terms of race and ethnicity, it wasn't as far off as I thought it might be. Um, it did capture some of the groups, what the preferred not to say, uh, part, you know, we're not exactly clear how that would actually fall out. Uh, but it was, it was, it was actually better than I thought we would do. Uh, type of household, um, your current age, uh, we did very well, obviously, in the 35 to 44. Um, about half between, uh, I would say the, up to 65. Uh, again, the, the under 34 group and obviously we didn't do, you know, uh, I think obviously we have a, a big gap there in terms of, of reaching that group. Uh, the plus 65s and, and others, I think we did pretty well on. Um, in terms of the breakup, breakdown of the households, uh, couples with children and couples with no children in home were the predominant ones. Uh, single and so forth, we're probably, uh, underrepresented in comparison to the other data that we know we have. Um, again, it, we, we have some work to do to make sure that we, uh, we cover everybody. Education, uh, this actually tracks pretty well with the, the TRPC data. Uh, in terms of bachelor's degree and graduate degree, we actually have a fairly high, uh, component of college-educated people in the city. Um, so this isn't too far off. Um, so the next big part of the survey, obviously, we want to focus on is how do people get their information? Uh, and what are the best ways for us to, uh, to ask those kind of questions? We started with some very basic questions of what, what times work best for you? So you'll notice when we start to schedule our in-person open houses and so forth, we're going to be focusing on like Wednesdays and Thursday evenings. Uh, because, you know, based on the input we got, that seemed to be the best time. Um, of course, for us, it's, you know, it wouldn't be that much of an issue to do something during the day, but I don't think, it will get some people, but not most of the people. So. Uh, preferred ways to communicate with the city, uh, email and phone call is pretty high on there. Uh, attending virtual meetings versus attending meetings in, in person was slightly higher. Uh, that, of course, is, that doesn't surprise me too much, just given how much, uh, when we've done previous online open houses, uh, that's been kind of the breakdown. Uh, the last open house for the comprehensive plan, of course, was the opposite of that, but, you know, that's the way it works. Um, and then pretty even across the board for other ways of, uh, commenting on things. Ways that people learned about what's happening in the community? Email, I'm presuming from other interested people was, was probably number one. Uh, I was glad to see the city website was actually up there and on social media. Um, we did have a number of people who, you know, do, when the postcard, direct mail and the utility bill insert, that's still a pretty high rate. Um, so I, you know, again, we didn't have the ability to match up age and other things, but I wouldn't be surprised if that matched up with that pretty well. Um, newspapers, for those of us who used to read them or still read them, uh, I won't talk about that. Some snapshots of looking at how the city is now. Uh, we had some general questions about how people thought things were going service-wise. Uh, all those lines in blue are, the, the question is, do the services and facilities offered in the city meet your needs? Uh, yes in blue, uh, red is no and, and the green is not sure. Uh, so it's actually kind of interesting. Uh, utility services, which I think everybody reacts to because they get a bill and they can turn on the water and everything else, that's, that's a, uh, an easy one to react to. Parks and Rec probably does similar things. Um, other things I would draw attention to is, you know, we do know that road sidewalks and trails is always a big issue. Uh, and the, the response on this is not terribly surprising, uh, given the level of also comments that came with this. Uh, because we, we always get comments saying we need more trails, we need more sidewalks, uh, you know, what we're doing on the roadside work is, is disruptive and so forth. Um, one thing I also want to point out is the programs for seniors and permitting. I'm wondering, you know, if you aren't doing work on your house or have an issue, uh, you don't deal with permits and inspections. That's really comes down to if, you know, the need arises. Uh, but programs for seniors, I would hope have, would have been tracking a little closer to Parks and Rec, at least in terms of not being either yes or no versus not sure.
Well, with the question instructions, it was maybe it's too vague because programs for seniors could be many things. It could be things in the park, it could be medical services or things, uh, for rehabilitation, so it may have been too broad of a question.
Yeah.
Potentially.
I think it's also possible that, uh, not, people might have put not sure just in case it is like not applicable sort of reaction. So if they think like, okay, I'm not a, if they're not a senior, they don't have a senior in their household, they probably just were like, eh, I don't know if we do anything for, so if it's not like as close to home for them, they might have just kind of opted out of the question rather than say yes or no. Uh, whereas programs for youth, you know, especially based on the household size, uh, data we saw of, you know, number of couples at home with children is, uh, kind of the highest. So you'd expect people would be more up on, uh, programs for youth than programs for seniors.
Uh, we also asked people to rate our provision of services. Uh, again, blue, excellent, red, good, average is green, uh, poor and very poor, purple and blue. Um, the, I guess, I'm just trying to quickly remember though. We did pretty well when it came to police and fire services and parks were not too far behind. Again, the road sidewalks and bicycle lanes, I think, is, you know, everyday interaction. Uh, and we've had a lot of construction and we have a lot of sidewalks to build. So this isn't necessarily a, a overall surprise. I am, I guess, you know, with the exception of the poor ratings for sidewalks and bicycle lanes, um, I guess I'm pretty grateful that we have a, you know, average and better, uh, first reaction at least of these things. We also asked some general quality of life questions, uh, in terms of, first of all, we wanted to know what was important to people uh, when they considered, uh, the quality of life. And we listed a number of things here. Uh, and again, the, the legend has the ratings across there. Uh, safety was often repeated, uh, theme, not only in the, the answers to this question, but also in terms of the written responses um, in, in the questions that we received. Um, I guess I'm pleased to see that it's still a good place to raise a family for about, you know, 70% of the population. And I think that sort of ties into other things like the small-town atmosphere and other things. What came out of the comments also was that, um, proximity to employment and shopping opportunities weren't really as important uh, to people as, uh, the other things that are listed here. Um, uh, so that was an interesting, interesting finding.
Brad, on this one, um, was there, um, uh, was there any kind of question related to walkability?
Uh, as quality of life, no, I don't think so. I think we, we, as a general, we talked about streets and roads for quality of life, that's a very, you know, covers everything. Uh, but I'm thinking in terms of like the walkability question, we could probably extrapolate from some of the responses to say the quality of sidewalks and bike lanes and so forth, but there is a concern for that. Uh, meaning it's an important issue, um, that, you know, that people think we need to improve on. Um, so I, I guess, you know, we didn't ask that necessarily of the quality of life thing, but I think, you know, it's possible to say that, you know, people want to be able to walk places. Uh, and we have a, you know, identified that we have some work to do, uh, based on some of the answers to the previous questions.
Yeah, I think so, particularly when you get into a lot of the comments, you know, the individual comments, the issue around providing sidewalks, paths, trails, and in particular, between, between neighborhoods and between neighborhoods and small business. Um, or, or, you know, for example, the, the heritage distilling area um, and other, and other places. So, um, maybe, you know, something to note, um, to, to connect the dots on that. We're still a very auto-centered place, so the streets and roads are, are critical, but, but, you know, in terms of quality of life, walkability is often, um, up there with, with people in how they rate quality of life.
Mm-hmm. Uh, as a side note, we are, we are finalizing the scope of work for our transportation consult. And, uh, they are going to be producing a bike and pedestrian plan as part of the transportation plan, which we haven't done a full plan like that before. Um, and that's definitely, I mean, it fits in with what we've been hearing. And that's definitely, I mean, it fits in with what we've been hearing from the community, not only through the survey, but from previous community surveys and other things, that's a very important topic to address.
I think, I think it's going to be really key to think about that and, you know, kind of harking back to, I think Commissioner Varela's remark about, you know, services for seniors and things like that. Walkability, quality of life for seniors is hinges on being able to fairly accessibly walk to services or things like, you know, buying groceries or medical or just, you just, you know, modest recreation in parks and so on, as well as just connecting to the community. So, okay, looking forward to that one then.
Yeah, that's a great comment. I will say that based on the people who did respond to the survey, there was a huge, there were a lot of comments related to walkability and quality of life. We just didn't spell it out in the survey, but it's definitely a concern that, you know, respondents did have and it did come up quite a bit. I think they tied it more along with like parks and recreation and then our roads and transportation. But a lot of these questions, some of these questions, I should say, were open-ended, so they could leave comments. We just didn't really identify that so far on the, on this presentation, but there were comments in regards to their opinions based on these questions. So a lot of people did provide feedback in that regard, especially about walkability, sidewalks. And there were even comments about seniors and accessibility as far as walkability.
We then took the question of quality of life and asked, how would you rate Tumwater based on those factors? And I just want to point out an interesting result in terms of the shopping opportunities, housing options and proximity to, well, and streets and roads. All of those had probably the strongest average or less than the other questions. And that was kind of interesting because we had asked some, I don't want, fairly pointed questions about housing options and didn't receive the level of interest that I expected. However, this does suggest, you know, that we're not where we should be in terms of housing options. So it's sort of a mixed bag, again, on what we're talking about here. And again, it may reflect those who took the survey and those who didn't take the survey as well. Critical areas or issues facing Tumwater today. Crime, public safety was very important, housing costs and rent, overall cost of living, homelessness, those were the big issues with jobs and the economy and racism and equity a little bit lower on that. So it was interesting that we had a number of comments about traffic and transportation, but it didn't rise to the level of being a number one or two issue. That was kind of a surprise, given some of the other things that we had heard in the previous questions. So this is a little bit of a summary of some of the written responses we have. I encourage you, if you have the time, to look through the written responses. Depending upon your viewpoint, it will, it will agree with your viewpoint or anger you and it will do that across the board, no matter what your opinion is, actually. So it's probably not a bad representation. Yes?
So the way the question is written, it says facing Tumwater today. Does it indicate that these are problems in the city today? It may be in the minds of the people that they're facing them in the future. That's the way I read it. And certainly the concerns about homelessness and safety have basis in what we see happening in places like Seattle and even in Olympia. And the way this is written, they're facing Tumwater today because the thought is if they're happening in other places, they're coming our way.
And that matches, we had a community meeting last month, about 125, 130 people attended to talk about that very question. And that was very strongly stated by those in attendance. The city council, their work session is considering some changes to our park coordinates, which in part started the, you know, the process of wanting to hold that meeting in the first place. So I'd encourage following that too, to see what, you know, the concerns are and so forth. It's also interesting from listening to people at that meeting that there was, there was a lot of, we don't want this, but not always we have this kind of issue in terms of the responses. It was clear that, you know, we, that it's an issue that's concerning, but it's not necessarily it's our issue yet, was kind of a takeaway I had from that.
Brad, that's kind of my question too, on, you know, how can we sort out, I don't want to diminish people's concerns, but how do we put it into context or perspective about how, how, how much of it occurs here?
Well, we do have some data based on our point in time surveys for homelessness as well as service provision and other things that we can draw from to sort of talk about what it looks like on the ground here in Tumwater in terms of what the issues that we have been dealing with. Since I started in 2016, I've been involved in the point of time count in the city. There hasn't really been a dramatic uptick in homelessness in the city since I started. There's always been sort of a steady level. It's never been anywhere close to Olympia's level or even Mises' level. There's just sort of a background, but it's there. You may not see it as easily, readily as you see in Olympia because we don't have a central downtown and we're more spread out. And to be honest, poverty is much easier to hide here than it is probably in Olympia. So, you know, I'm not going to understate what the problem could be, but just based on the areas that I know we've had encampments, that I know we've had, that I've talked with folks on the street and so forth, there hasn't been a dramatic change in the city that way.
I think, I think it will become, I mean, in terms of looking to decide what the city does about it, you know, and informing the council about, you know, how bad a problem is it, how much resource to put toward it, you know, when you're weighing against putting resource to other things too, it's, you know, teasing that apart is going to be important, I think.
Yeah.
Well, and do we see the same areas of concern over and over again? Or is it encampment here, then it pops up in a different location? Or is it every time, I mean, in the eight years you've been seeing all this?
There are areas you know there likely going to be encampments or have been in the recent past. And that's just sort of geographic, you know, where it's walkable, where you can, you know, all that kind of stuff. Steep slopes and, you know, forested areas and all this kind of stuff, in particular areas, yeah, you're going to see that just because the access is. We're not necessarily seeing, okay, these people who were over here and now over here and back and forth and back and forth, it's, it changes. There's not a, like a constant population that moves around just Tumwater. That, that's been a kind of an interesting change.
Just really quick for tie these together, have we seen a trend or is there data to show that over the past five years, the level of crime or the types of crimes have increased or decreased? Is it pretty steady? Because there will be that difference between reality and perception. And maybe that would be something we can bring, hey, we may be feeling it more, but the data that we're seeing is relatively stable or it's decreasing. Do we have that readily available or is that something we collect?
We do have that. What, I don't think we're decreasing, but I don't think we're seeing a spike or anything. It's probably about the same level. I think in terms of crime, I think property crime is still pretty high. I mean, it's not extraordinarily high, but it's something that is affecting a lot of people. We do hear anecdotally from commercial and industrial users, yeah, we have a problem, you know, that kind of thing. So there have been, you know, requests for, you know, changes to how they manage their operations and allowances to allow them to do certain things to secure their facilities. But yeah, I don't think we've seen a big uptick. What I could certainly do is reach out to our police to get the most recent numbers on that. But from my reading of the reports that come out on a monthly basis, and I think I send you the police and fire response reports, Tumwater and TAP has all that information. And I think we could also go back pretty easily on the website for past and take a look at that. So that would be a good thing to do that. Those are actual, you know, this is, I'm responding to this kind of.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
So in terms of written responses for the city's greatest asset, parks, landscaping, trees, proximity to recreation and our community events, small town feel, central location, schools and community in general, our emergency services and crime prevention, not having many homeless encampments, as well as our historic background, were all kind of things we pulled from the written responses. Again, this, this is more qualitative than a quantitative summary of the written responses. We tried to run some various things to try to pull out and the particular phrases, data and whatever, it, it didn't, it wasn't good. So we just read the comments and this is what we had. But looking ahead, we also asked some questions about where people thought, you know, where they thought we were going in general. The overall quality of life today versus five years, I guess, you know, 71% good and excellent now in about almost the same percentage, well, 64% a drop-off there. There were obviously a little uptick in terms of poor, where we thought we were going. So it's, it's interesting to look at that and try to figure out exactly why we had a 10% increase in excellent and at the same time, we also had almost the same increase in poor. So, you know, again, I just call attention to Erica being the eternal optimist and myself, maybe that's just part of the nature of this. We talked, asked a question about what kind of strategies can we think about using to grow and develop? Because obviously we're, this is a plan for future development of the city. And there were, you know, we had some, this is where I think, Elizabeth, we get at the encourage walkable and bikeable communities. That was, that was the number one, followed by the increasing open space. And then it started to go into supporting development of more housing, diversify our employment options, pay more options beside the car. There wasn't a whole groundswell of support for higher density, which is that surprising, but, you know, that was an option we wanted to ask. Interest is, in general, we wanted to, and again, these were tied back to obviously the things that we're working on specifically for the comprehensive plan. This is why we asked these particular items. Affordable housing and economic development came in pretty strong on both. I was a little surprised about transportation not being any higher because, you know, again, we were getting feedback, written feedback and others that indicated that would be a much more of an interest of a topic. The top three priorities, so I apologize, what I should have done is number, this is number one. It covers police and fire, crime and city services. Some of the comments that came in under that include reducing homelessness, prioritization of public safety and reducing crime and drugs, hiring more firefighters and police, more programs for the homeless, more programs for special needs or families needs, maintaining a clean city and improving schools. Again, we had, I want to say about 500 written comments under, for each of these priorities, we had about 500 responses. We had a large number of written responses for each, so I would encourage you to take a look at those as well. The second one was housing, reducing sprawl, which is, you know, again, we're quite excited about the GMA side of things. Keeping small town feel, we're always curious on what people thought was the small town and all that, because it, it was kind of hard to figure that out from the answers, even the written answers. More affordable options for owning and renting, more middle housing, improving our building permit process and creating affordable senior housing were all things that were noted in the, in the written comments. Last item was economic development, more local shops and restaurants, rural redevelopment was still a priority, of course, creating a downtown. It was also interesting, there's a number of people asked about more uniform building code theme. I'm not sure if we can go the full level and worth route, but if anybody has a particular thing they want us to become, let me know. Creating more jobs, always good, bringing in and attracting more employers in industries, diversity in employment in business, and also creating more community spaces for events and venues. In terms of the housing question, we wanted to get a general read from people on how serious people thought the housing situation was in the city. Again, keeping in mind the survey respondents on this were mostly homeowners, mostly had lived here for a while. So, you know, the perception may be different depending obviously on the group, as you're asking. Scale was zero to 10, we're zero as not at all problem and 10 as a crisis. We're kind of right in the middle. But it's kind of interesting because that doesn't quite match up with some of the other survey results where the affordable housing was ranked as one of the most important things and so forth. So just trying to figure out how all those answers fit together was an interesting problem. We focused a number of questions on housing and services because obviously this is an important part of the comprehensive plan update. Do we offer a mix of housing and services that encourages residents to continue living in the community at every stage? Again, it was pretty close, not, actually, I'm going to caveat that because yes and no were too far apart, but also not too, not too familiar with what all that Tumwater offers was also pretty high there. So that tells me we've got more discussions to basically to sort of get a better answer for this question, so people understand what that means and how that may relate. So I'm just going to take that as a, we need to ask a lot more questions before we can draw something from this one. Thinking about housing, select all the statements you agree with. It costs too much to buy a home and rents are too high, were by far the biggest responses. Lack of available housing being a reason for high housing costs and not enough housing being available were kind of distant third. Interestingly, they thought Tumwater, you know, not doing enough for housing wasn't, I guess, as big a priority. So I guess either we're doing something and we don't, you know, they think it's out of our control, which is in part, that's part of it.
Brad, I'm wondering here on this, in this kind of area, maybe coming a little bit out of the, especially coming out of the 2008 economic recession timeframe and sort of the aftermath of some of that and other things too, where a lot of places around the country, maybe around the world too, where housing was bought up by corporations, whether single family or multifamily. And did the survey explore that at all or could we get at that? And, you know, I'm kind of where I'm going with that is ultimately what kind of, what kind of policies could the city adopt that would slow that down? Because that's what in a lot of places is driving the costs up.
Yeah, no, and that's an interesting point there. And there's a number, a couple anecdotal things I'd like to share. While we are also seeing, you know, a fair amount of single family housing being built in the city despite the shift in the past three years to getting more building permits for multifamily, which is, which is the change. We do know that there are some of the completed subdivisions that a good portion of those units are actually being held back for rent. They're not being sold. They're either by the original developer, a portion is being held and rented, or in one case, an entire development has been purchased and held on and is being rented. So, you know, there are things that we, we really don't have a say in terms of how ownership is, is held in terms of, you know, who can own the property and what they can ultimately do with it. That is a decision that's outside of our control. There may be things like short, we could deal with, but.
I mean, I don't, I don't know how it occurs, maybe, and maybe something has to occur at the state level to give authority to local jurisdictions, but it seems like there, there are mechanisms that help, that do help drive more individuals. there, there are mechanisms that help, that do help drive more individual homeownership and, and better prices even for rental properties so that, you know, over, over, over time, there's generational wealth built that's possible, modest though it may be, it, it's still more possible. And so I, you know, I'm just wondering as we move into some where, where these, where these expressions of concern are leading us, you know, what kinds of things can the comp plan do or policies within the city do to help, help, help turn that?
And that's a good question. I don't necessarily think we could do very much when, once the houses are built or the units are built, what happens with them, whether they're turned to ownership, whether they turn to rentals and so forth.
Maybe not now, but maybe in the future we could, you know, kind of think about what's possible.
I wasn't coughing to get your attention, but I did, I did have a note.
You're waving your arm.
Right?
Yeah.
To that point, HOAs do have a great deal of leverage, right? So most HOAs typically have some type of ratio that they'll incorporate. So if there's a hundred homes, eighty have to be owned by the primary resident and then twenty percent can be rented out either by the owner or a corporation and that cannot exceed, that is part of the purchase process. So I'm wondering if the council can maybe leverage that, that technique or that style or maybe incorporates more of that to reduce the number of homes that are purchased by those larger corporations? Because it is, it is a challenge because they come in with cash, they come in, purchase these properties outright and then they basically exclude any, anyone that's not in that wheelhouse of being able to drop, you know, four hundred grand at a, at a pop to get into that entry level home.
Yeah, that's actually an interesting question because we don't actually, with the exception of some various like specific ongoing maintenance issues, say for stormwater or if there are private roads or things like that, we don't really review or approve HOA evidence that come through. That's, you know, it's a, it's a private matter and usually it's established upfront by the developer. At some point, there's a turnover, you know, a certain number of units become held by somebody else that, you know, it becomes its own self-governing thing. But we really don't get involved in the contents of those HOA things. There is obviously state laws about what you can and can't do in the HOAs. But, you know, if the developer sets it up to either be silent on that at the initial part, or, you know, in your case, eighty, twenty, or in my neighborhood, I think it's like ninety, ten kind of thing. Yeah, that's not really something that we have a say in.
And just for the record, I hate HOAs, but they're probably the one good thing that they do.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, and it's kind of, it's like, I don't want them telling me what to do with my backyard, but at the same time, it does provide, holds back certain things. So.
Well, I guess, you know, just to keep, keep the commerce, this little topic going for just a little bit longer, short of city authority, or depending on, you know, being dependent upon how HOAs work or something like that, perhaps we can, we can think about ways to, the city can encourage things like, things like land trusts or, you know, maybe there's some sort of homeownership type trust where we can, I don't, you know, I don't know how those things work exactly, but you know, we can, the city can encourage that more and more so that, so that properties stay available at a more affordable cost to the primary residents.
Yeah. No, and thank you for bringing up land trust because that, that brings out a very specific examples that I know we're dealing with both in the city and on the regional housing council. And this is in, in terms of manufacturing home parks. There, in the city of Tumwater, we have zoning that restricts the use of land where a majority of the mobile home parks are located to mobile home parks and not much else. So the ability to change it to say a commercial use or something is limited in ways that in the Lacey and Olympia, that doesn't exist. So that prevents one level of change in terms of affordable housing going away and being replaced by something else. We have, and this was identified by the council when we did the original housing action plans in two thousand eighteen, was trying to work with groups like land trust to, you know, for the, for the people who live in those parks to work together to purchase the property and manage it themselves rather than have an outside, you know, another owner own the land and they have to rent from it as a way to control costs and to keep, you know, the neighborhood stable. So that's definitely something we've been pursuing. And we've definitely, we're definitely open to doing more of that. It just hasn't, you know, especially with the mobile manufacturing home parks, it takes capital, takes cash to, for the, the people who own, you know, rent the property there to try to purchase it and to come up with cash because that, you know, what they're, they, they don't have the assets to begin with. But, yeah, it's, it's definitely something we've been considering and trying to figure out ways to make that work.
Great, a lot of creativity ahead.
Yes, yeah, and I, I think, thank you for, you know, it, we do need to, you know, ask some questions that we may not have been asking in the past, like why aren't we doing this and have you looked here and all this kind of stuff? I think that is always an appropriate thing for the commission to do. Again, keeping in mind that Erica is the force of good, I'm the force of evil in terms of how, you know, are you asking, are you doing, what are you doing about this? Are you aware of this? I think that's totally appropriate to ask those questions. So if you're not getting a satisfactory answer from us about that, you can keep hounding us or you can go to Mike, our boss, and, and say, you know, this is a good, good thing to be paying attention to. And I'm not, I'm not kidding when I say that. I think it's important that we, we talk about these things. Some of the written conversation comments, excuse me, that we had as part of the survey, including about, concerns about high density housing, schools becoming crowded, lack of infrastructure to support growth, that's, that's roads and utilities and population growth in, in general. There were a number of comments about using regulations to protect property, property, I think more than just property taxes. Concerns that we've talked a little bit about the short-term rentals and private companies purchasing housing and using them as rentals was definitely something we heard in the survey. The idea of being able to control the rental market and prices and all those kinds of things. There were a number of anti-growth and development comments in there. Comments about keeping single family, not building more housing in apartments and saying private, providing more housing will not solve homelessness. So there was, again, a range of opinions shared on that. Other housing considerations, there are concerns about overcrowding in traffic, wanting to see lower impact fees, streamlining and creating faster permitting, and stop raising property taxes to incentivize more private, affordable housing. Also some comments about providing behavioral health services and treatment centers and affordability for all income and age groups. So again, just a whole host of things related to that. Yes.
Curious, right? So this is, is based off of like their responses, their response. So they said, you know, stop raising property taxes to incentivize more affordable housing. Is there any data to back that up that if we were to lower or keep property tax stable that that would have an impact on whether or not housing gets developed or is there any?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Because it sounds like that, you know, that's a perception and, you know, there's the, the part of me that's like, oh yeah, that makes sense if it costs less then they'll build more, but it's like, if we could find, you know, any sort of like correlation there, I wonder what it would show us, like in other, obviously, you know, it might not apply to us, but other jurisdictions, like if they give property tax breaks, do they see a requisite in, in, uh, uh, increase in affordable housing? Or, you know, does it just kind of, does it not really make a, a big difference in how much housing gets developed?
Yeah, I think the one program that we do have in the city that sort of does that explicitly, the multifamily tax exemption program, there are a lot of issues with the program. Permanent housing, it's only for twelve years, it's only for a very limited number of units. Obviously, the feedback we get is that we wouldn't have built this project if we didn't have that. Again, it, it's, it, but that, you know, it doesn't reduce the property taxes coming to the city, it just reduces the property tax for that particular owner. The, the overall burden stays the same, it just gets reallocated. You know, individual property owners may not see a huge uptick if one development has a reduction in property taxes, but there is, there is a change. One of the discussions, underlying discussions that I'm always interested to be listening to is the role of development playing, development, you know, if, if development comes in, they pay for their impacts, obviously. And then we hear from the building community saying, well, that's a big disincentive, obviously, to building more housing if in addition to the cost of construction and land purchase and everything else, I'm paying X amount of dollars per unit for traffic impacts, park impacts, school impacts, fees and all those kinds of things. The discussion that we kind of hear in the background is, well, the choices are, those costs are going to exist, somebody's going to have to build the capacity of those roads to accommodate the growth, the change in services and everything, but who pays? Is it current residents, the current community, the property taxes of everybody, that specific development, you know? So there's, there's an underlying discussion that I think, you know, is always a good one to have, but I'm, you know, it's always interesting to try to figure out how, how that actually plays out. Yes, Terry?
When you start talking about property taxes, I think it's important to realize that in the city of Tumwater, a large portion of our property tax is voluntary. We have voted to buy fire engines, we have voted to improve our schools. And that's where the bulk of the property taxes come from. And if you're going to cut property taxes, that's probably where they would be cut first.
Yep. And then the breakdown of property taxes, the district has probably the largest portion in Tumwater. The state has a significant portion, the county has a portion and we have a portion. So it's, there's a lot of different things that come into play, but.
We have voted to pay those taxes.
Yeah, you have voted on the city level. I know in terms of road improvements, the, you know, the repayment program is paid for by the property tax. Michael?
Well, pivoting off of that, actually, you mentioned the schools and this may be more a question for the school board than city. We've seen, you know, the Olympia School District go through some, some struggles recently. They were looking at, you know, potentially having to like even shutter schools for declining attendance. Do you know what the attendance numbers look, or the enrollment numbers look like for, for Tumwater, if there's any trends going on there? Because you mentioned people saying they feel like the schools are crowded, but then at the same time, I'm also hearing about, you know, different jurisdictions where like they're having fewer students but more crowded classes. Do you know any of the situation going on for the Tumwater School District or?
Yeah, I, I mean, our conversations with the, the staff at the school district have been, we still need more facilities and there's still going to be a plan for more facilities. What I don't know is say the change year over year, the COVID effect, there's a lot of other things that, that came into play. Olympia has a number of its own challenges and issues in terms of how they've allocated monies. So, yeah, I don't really, I don't, my, my feeling is just listening and talking with people about the Tumwater situation and we do have the need for more facilities. We're not seeing a decrease. COVID reaction hasn't been as extreme as what happened in Olympia.
I am with the growth over the next ten years, that being overlaid there as well.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's another important thing because I think Olympia is not seeing the, the growth in school age population that Tumwater is.
That's true.
You know, with all the apartments being built downtown Olympia, that's not necessarily families with children that are located in there. We're definitely seeing families with children here.
So if you look at the single family homes.
Even the multifamily in terms of the, the bedroom count, you know, we're getting, you know, there's a lot of demand for three bedroom, a lot of demand for two bedroom, which, you know, speaks to, in my mind, a bigger family size than other places. So we also asked a, an open-ended question, you know, we noticed we asked a lot of open-ended questions, but this one was really open-ended. This was written comments that you wanted city leadership to hear. What we didn't try to do is summarize those comments, so I encourage you to take a look through them to see what some of the issues were raised as part of that. Responses really vary all over the board. So again, I just encourage you to take a look. Again, as a reminder of our upcoming events, we have our joint tour for housing. We're going to have a similar tour for transportation in August. We have our joint work sessions that are coming up. So if you like joint work sessions, I'd really encourage you to come to commissions in June and July because every single meeting will be a joint work session with the tree board or with the council. Yeah, so we're going to have a lot of people. Also, just as a reminder, we're also aiming to have some more focused open houses coming up. There has been some changes in staffing at the city in our communications department, so we may have to shift the dates back a little bit for some of these because we work closely with communications to help set these up and plan them. The, these open houses are going to be, our intent would be to do something slightly different than we did for the initial open house. We would still have an in-person component one night, but we would also have an online component that would be open for two weeks for people to come, you know, we'll keep the materials up and everything, but to take comment, respond, ask questions and all that online over a two week period. Again, any comments? All of our emails. Were there any additional questions as part of materials that you read or?
I wanted to say that in addition to, you know, the, like the, the, that you got nearly a thousand respondents, speaks to some pretty good outreach. And then I really liked the, the presentation, you know, not just the, the slides you did, but in the, in the body of the text of the memorandum, like when you covered a particular graph, graph and then you captured some of the comments that were related to the information, the data in that graph, I found that really useful. Kind of it's, it gave a little more context, it kind of fleshed it out a little more. So good job with this report. I, I don't know if this kind of thing goes to council or not, but I think it, it is, is really good overall. So a lot of good hard work and some good information here.
So I, I'd like to first thank Erica for, for devoting a lot of time to try to distill what we had in the survey into what you saw in the staff report and the presentation. Because I think that was, you know, that's all essential. We're, we're intending to give a similar presentation to the general government committee next month on the results. I know that they are going to have some, a lot of questions. We have posted all of this information in addition to your meeting packets that are posted online. The individual parts of that, the, the presentation, the staff report and the survey results are now posted on the update webpage, so it's now available. We'll be sharing that information when we do our outreach email on the housing side here shortly too. So we're looking forward to having more people take a look at that.
Great. Looks like Commissioner Tobias, I can see you guys now.
Oh, this isn't a question so much of that, I, I just realized I forgot to mention in my manager's report, I'm going to be out of town on April night, so I will not be available for the joint planning commission tour unfortunately.
We'll have one less serving for the buffet then.
Well, would that, would that affect quorum if I'm not there or will, will there be like enough, is that more like?
If we have, we'll need four, four people to be there to officially be able to call it a planning commission quorum. I'm, and in the past, when we don't have a quorum, we typically try not to meet. At the same time, I'm reluctant to not meet if we have a majority or a quorum of the council. We could always say that, you know, it's not an official planning commission meeting, but, you know, we're there.
Informational workshop.
For us, for the planning commission itself, we can just deal with that, but I don't want to send you home.
And at the same time, it's.
It's an hour earlier, so it's going to be six to eight o'clock.
More like a field trip.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Thanks, Michael, for bringing that up, that you would be absent. And I guess I would chime in and say, you know, we are presently, we have three vacancies here on the planning commission. And so if you know of people that might be interested to volunteer, like we all are, encourage them to apply. That would, that would make it easier on all of us. If one of us, one or two of us have to be out on a meeting, then we still have quorum and can conduct business, so a little outreach there. I'm putting in a plug to join us.
Or if there's anybody who isn't, you can certainly send them my, like, at the conversation and all that. So I'd be more than happy to do that.
Let's see, any, anything else to discuss tonight?
Not from the staff side.
Okay. Good presentation, lot of, lot of thought-provoking stuff. All right then, well, our next meeting, as Brad was just saying, will be the 9th, the joint field trip council. Other than that, any other questions or motions?
Commissioner Tobias, motion to adjourn.
Okay. That is Commissioner Varela, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn our meeting tonight, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of adjourning tonight, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, all right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.